Welcome to the twentieth of March Commissioner meeting. We'll do start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's that time of year where you say clay ball, clay ball. We've approved the minutes from the March sixth Commissioner meeting. And we're playing a motion to approve. Motion to approve the minutes, March sixth is submitted.
I second that.
Any other discussion, if not, all those in paper say aye.
Aye.
And we approved accounts payable vouchers.
Make motion to approve the accounts payable vouchers that submitted.
I second Dave's motion. And no discussion, all in paper say aye. And we approve the payroll dock. Motion to approve payroll dock.
I second that.
No more discussion, all in paper say aye. First up, Rick. I know you have some things.
Yeah. Okay. You're here or not?
I brought my.
Oh, I got another copy of you.
Full of good news.
Oh, yeah. Everything in the insurance world right now is good. Uh, got the renewal, go over it. You say you have a copy?
Yeah, I got one here.
And I'm just gonna go through and let you know what the changes are. A lot of the companies right now are changing deductibles, getting off some of their li- on the liabilities because of the claims. I mean, some, like, when Mike was here last, we talked, it was some, that's all he does is insurance entities, county, cities, and he's saying anywhere from what we have, which he's saying ours is good news. And to what he said, two hundred percent increases.
Yeah.
So, or to not even having a policy, so. But I'm gonna go through and hit the ones as far as the changes that have been made. On page five, more or less, just list all the locations we have. Page six, coverage of limits on your building and personal property. The coverage is a hundred and five million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, six forty-six. That was an increase of five million. They went up five percent for inflation on the buildings. And that's just, that's built into the policy that they do that. Uh, eight, seven.
That's just built into the policy.
Well, I mean, that's, well.
I know, I'm just.
The building, building materials and things like that. Seven and eight are your extensions, and those are all the same as we've had in the past. Still have the value of papers and records at two million, and nothing's changed there. Still have your business income, the same. Earthquake coverage, same. On page ten.
One day we'll be happy when that happens.
Yeah, flood coverage is the same. Equipment breakdown, utility service, all the same. Uh, page twelve, that's crime, all the same as last year. Streets and sign coverage, same. Page fourteen, deductibles, where we have our first change. Earthquakes, still the same, floods, same. On windstorm and hail, they have gone to a one percent deductible with a one hundred thousand dollar minimum. So, that is the change. Do you have a solution for that? We can go over here in a minute, but that is one of the first changes.
What was the deductible?
Was, uh, five thousand dollars. Yeah.
So, it's one percent of the building's value.
Right. So, say.
Could be a hundred and five thousand.
So, well, a hundred thousand minimum. So, you're gonna have on the jail at forty-six million, you're gonna have a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar deductible.
Oh, I see. Oh, it's one percent.
Or one hundred thousand. And last year, it was a five thousand dollar deductible. Going to a five thousand is going to a ten thousand this year on the deductible. On page fifteen. So, your deductible on anything other than wind and hail would be ten thousand. And that's why we had, what, all those roofs we put on the one year? I mean, they've been getting, and all these companies are raising, I mean, even on homeowners, they're going to, I don't know, one percent. Most all the companies I know, I know State Farm went to percentage, Travelers, SafeCo, they've all gone to a minimum twenty-five hundred deductible just on a homeowner. So, you're, you're looking five hundred thousand dollars coverage compared to a hundred and five million. So, that's where they're looking as far as get off some of their risk. But the deductible has gone to ten thousand dollars on page fifteen. Sixteen, business income, uh, five million, four forty-two thousand. That's on the jail to satisfy the bonds that we have on that. Seventeen, miscellaneous property coverage, that is the same at one million, three sixty-two, three thirty-four, which is the voting machines, the polling pads, the laptops for the sheriff's department, the computer coverage, things like them. Uh, page eighteen, contractors' equipment. That is at two million, seven sixty-five, three ninety-six. That is up from last year, which was at like tw- two million, six sixty-four, two fifty-three. I think Highway Department bought a couple new pieces of equipment, which increased that. Nineteen's all the same, twenty's the same. Twenty-two's the same. Getting over to general liability, page twenty-three, still have a million, two million aggregate. That's all stayed the same. Employee benefits liability, same coverage. Actually, one of the few things that stayed the same premium. Page twenty-six, law enforcement liability. Going from a twenty-five thousand deductible to a fifty thousand deductible. And premium jumped up quite a bit on that. Sixty-two thousand dollars.
New building.
Well, that's liability.
That's just liability.
Yeah, that's just a liability. And that's due to nobody wants to touch a jail right now. And with the claims, what we've had, that's a major cause of that. On page twenty-seven, the public entity management liability. They're changing the deductible on that from five thousand to ten thousand. So, that also increased their deductible there. Page twenty-nine, public entity employment-related practices liability. That went up from five thousand deductible to twenty-five thousand deductible. On page twenty-nine. Uh, page thirty-one, on commercial auto. Have seventy-four autos, twelve trailers. Deductibles on page thirty-two have changed. Uh, last year, we were at a thousand deductible, comp and collision. This year, they've changed it to twenty-five hundred on any vehicle under a hundred thousand. If it's over a hundred thousand, it's gonna be five thousand comp, five thousand collision. And that's just gonna affect the Highway Department, mainly dump trucks and that kind of thing. Anything that, I don't think anybody else has a vehicle over a hundred thousand. So, but there are twelve of them on the policy. Umbrella. Page thirty-four, got a four million dollar umbrella. As far as the underlying schedule, they've excluded law enforcement liability. And they've also excluded employment-related practices liability, no longer included under the umbrella. So, I have gone, we've gone out, got excess. I'm gonna go through with that with you in just a second. And that's all the coverage is, and they've got the account summary, premium summary on the back page. Total's five ninety, seven seventy-seven. On that. And that's up thirty-two point four nine percent with all the changes. And not including what we have to go outside to get coverage on. Next, we have cyber. Cyber liability has stayed pretty much same coverage is all the way through. It's at thirteen six, or at fourteen, two oh seven for the year. That's down, that's the only positive. That's the only positive I can tell you.
That's highlight.
We saved, we saved you a thousand dollars there.
Five thousand thirty-one, down a thousand.
Which, that, well, that was what, two years ago, they came out at like thirty-five thousand, I think, and we had to so it's, that's where they were getting hit a lot, and now it's, and that's come down. So, that's coming in.
Oh, wildfires.
Yeah, and Teslas.
Yeah.
I saw where they were gonna start increasing rates on Teslas for the fire bombings and the shootings of the cars. Okay, this is excess law. And what we did was since they went out, or when, since they deleted the law liability off of the umbrella, we went out and got quotes for the extra four million dollars. On, and nobody would do over two million. So, we got two, on the first two million, uh, it's gonna be an extra ninety-six thousand, two hundred. On the second two million. Forty-eight, three eleven.
It would take a second to me.
So, that's additional to all the other. And that's just to replace where it was on, under the umbrella before, and they're not they're not wanting to keep it under there anymore as far as with the claim history. Any questions on any of this that we're going through?
So, two different insurance companies.
Yeah, two different companies picking it up, but the first, I mean, it hit the, excess would hit the first company on the first two million. That's why it's a higher premium. And usually, you're gonna have
Double the policy fee on the second.
The, um, the states coming in at what, seven hundred thousand on, on, if it's a state claim, but where it's gonna hurt, say, on a lawsuit, if it's a federal claim. And that's where you're gonna get in, 'cause you have a seven hundred thousand cap on the state level. And that's where, like we talked about the other day, as far as some of these, like, it was down in Clark County, I believe, where they were letting people into the women's jail or something, and they got federal, and they're looking at four day. Six million, I think.
Yeah, big claim.
So, that's why they suggest going with the four million. Went out and got excess EPLI, since they excluded that from the umbrella. And excess EPLI is forty-six, three eighty-one, twenty-five. And that's to good duty for four million dollars unemployment practices liability. Last one. Yep, keep them good. On the deductible, with the deductible going to one percent on, um, wind and hail, we went out and found a thing where you could buy your deductible down to, I think it's twenty-five thousand. Yeah, twenty-five thousand. So, on a wind and hail claim, say, like we talked about the jail, you have forty-six million dollars. It's gonna be a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar deductible. Say if it hit two or three buildings, say if it hit that, and the courthouse at sixteen million, you'd have another hundred and sixty thousand. So, you're looking about six hundred and twenty thousand dollar deductible. This buys your deductible down to twenty-five thousand. And we were able to get that for a company, and premium to do that is eighty-one, seven fifty-nine to buy that deductible down. And Mike, who I work with, he said most counties are doing that also. I mean, that would probably be your one thing that you would, you know, you would possibly opt out of. But, I mean, the four million and the excess on the law and the EPLI, I think, there's no question you need to keep that coverage. But that's getting you back to where as close as you are as far as coverage is as possible. Uh, there's not, with having the claim, you looked at other companies, and nobody's touching jails right now. We were lucky that they were, we talked them into staying on the million dollar, on the jail liability. 'Cause they had to send out that cancellation notice to give you so much time. And we, with get, being added, where they were, what, adding the new system to, what are they called, F-Seds or where they're clocking in, or every time they go through, and they know where they, that system you just approved, or
Oh, and they, they'll walk through.
Right.
Every, yeah.
I faxed that, or emailed that to them, and with, and showed where that was approved. And we talked about some other things that the jail, you know, that they were doing in Sheriff's Department. And they approved to stay on the million, or we would have been probably another two hundred and fifty thousand, yeah. And that's what I have.
It's all your good news?
Cyber.
Cyber, huh? There's the good news. Should've gone with that first, or last one. Kinda got buried in the middle.
Yeah. Churches are facing the same thing, aren't they?
Not as bad as counties. Mike was in town last, what, Thursday, we meet. He was heading to another, and they were, you know, taking two hundred percent. He says, I'm going out and having these conversations every day with counties and cities, and, and says, actually, yours is good news, is what he told me. And I said, um. But no, that's, well, last year, what, that's thirteen counties got canceled last year. And this year's worse, so. He, he's had some that he's not able to even get coverage. They're going onto our program where they have a self-insured retain, SIR, could be two hundred and fifty thousand, and everything's up above, sort of like we talked about on, on the health situation.
People are going like our health insurance to some extent, doing self-insure.
You still get a price that, to where you're at this or higher, doing that with a higher, you know, retention. So. Only thing is, hopefully, we'll have a good year in claims, and this'll
Will it?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Hopefully.
And I didn't know if you had a chance to discuss which ways you wanted to go on this, or?
The old coverage.
Um?
The old coverage is?
April one.
April one.
If you went with everything.
Eight twenty-nine, three twenty-four, twenty-five.
Eight eighty-one, five eighty-six.
Eight eighty-one?
Yeah.
I missed something, somewhere.
That's where, looking at five ninety, seven seventy-seven on the package, fourteen, two oh seven on the cyber.
I missed the eight. Nope, I didn't get the ninety-eight, so yeah, I had ninety-six, two hundred.
Excess law, first and second, as far as adding four million to excess, ninety-eight, and forty-nine for the excess on ELI, or EPLI, and then
Forty-six, three eighty-one for the excess, and
And eighty-one on the buy-down.
That's like betting on flush, ain't it?
Five points at the base.
The RFID's, that's what it's for, at the jail. RFID for them, yeah. Did you say you emailed that out, or, yeah, as far as?
I emailed them.
So, the buy-down is for the judiciary.
The wind and hail.
Hundred to
It's gonna be a minimum of a hundred thousand, but it's buying it down to twenty-five thousand. So, you wouldn't have that one percent. So, and that's a one percent per building, so if there was two or three buildings hit, say like on that hailstorm we had or something, you're gonna have, what? Say, two point six million, say it had, had paragons, so that's gonna be a, you know, twenty-six. Math.
In public, so that's twenty-six thousand.
Are you only talking buy-down like on wind and hail?
Wind and hail.
So, it's basically going to be roof unless it
Tornado.
Levels it.
Yeah.
So, that's twenty-five thousand.
What, yeah. So, if it were the jail or the courthouse or any other, so.
Yeah, per occurrence. Stuff you gotta have.
Yeah. Sure as you don't.
Wish you had.
Kind of the whole, it's your whole industry, isn't it?
Probably should've put me last.
Well, we'll have to seek some more, more funds too, won't we?
Yeah, we'll have to submit an advertisement, um, by Monday at noon to be able to get it approved for the next meeting.
Five hundred thousand?
Yes, so, last year, we had four hundred, getting number four hundred and fifty thousand maybe, and we upped it to five hundred thousand this year. I would recommend that the excess law portion be paid from Public Safety Lit. And it would maybe lessen the burden a little on the lit fund that pays the insurance.
Can we break other things out?
Um, yes, historically, I've gotten amounts of, from Rick for different buildings. The Highway Department used to pay for their insurance, but now, when we were paying for all of the insurance out of County General, but since we've been paying for it out of the lit, we have not been doing as much of the breaking out.
And that's not gonna be a big portion, I mean, big hits coming on the, on the jail.
The jail.
The law liability and the, and going out and getting excess liability for that, that's
Which we could break the entire jail out.
That's what I'm thinking. Take some of those, you have that total invoice that you
Well, it would be the forty-nine thousand, eight sixty-three, and the ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That would be exclusive rate for all businesses.
You're the one that can. Both of those are.
And then of the five hundred and ninety thousand, could you give us a breakdown at a later date of?
Per building?
Just for their building and vehicles.
On the jail?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, that's more or less gonna, I would have to base that off the valuation of the buildings and just subtract that, or, you know, get the multiplier and multiply times the total, five ninety, yes. But, I mean, most of that, that wouldn't really do it all, because, um, I mean, out of that, the law enforcement premium liability's running there, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five fourteen.
So, even if we just took that portion plus the two excess law, and took it out of Public Safety, that would
Two.
We wouldn't have to ask for an additional in lit at that point, just one in Public Safety.
That's about three hundred thousand, just on liability. On, on the jail.
Sounds like that's what we need to do. Is this actual buildings?
Uh, yes.
Replacement and all that? That, that's not our building.
Which one?
The
Animal shelter?
No, Department of Corrections, one oh eighty-second.
T-Ton, yeah.
It's rented.
We just have live, or we just have content coverage, or
Liability.
Liability and contents, yeah. That and at the animal shelter. That's owned by the city. But it's listed on there for liability purposes.
Okay.
And contents of both buildings. I mean, I, I really can't, but, I mean, I would, you definitely need the, the excess.
Yeah, well, I think so, I think, I mean, and
I mean, the only choice you have as far as, would be if you wanna go with the buy-down on the, on the deductible, I think.
I mean, you did, you did one incident.
Right.
And then you you'd wish you had it, so, and what did we have last Saturday, was it Saturday or Friday night? Friday night in the
Last Friday and Saturday.
I don't know if we got it here, but I've seen pictures around.
Georgetown and
Georgetown.
New Albany. Oakland City, they got hammered bad, yeah. Oakland City, they got hammered bad, yeah.
I'm like, oh, it'd never happen here. Well, to that level, okay. Talking about hail damage, what can I hear? Cause I mean, that wouldn't, I mean, that, that, that is just, it's gone off the value of the building. To determine the, how much your deductible would be to replace the roof, right, it's not, it's not like looking at the damage and.
Nope, it's just the valuation that's a mere deductible, which.
That's fine, I'm just.
I mean, some of them are. Prosecutor's office, two million nine hundred, or that's including contents.
I don't know, yeah, that's hard, I mean, it's just.
You got, it's not like, okay, well, it's only this amount, you know, it's gonna be, you know, this is what it's worth, and this is what your deductible is. Health departments, three million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, so I mean. That, I mean, it's. But the major one would be the jail.
The rest of them, I probably wouldn't even be turning in, right?
You'd still have a hundred thousand minimum.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like the annex. Save the hail damage to roof and it come in at twenty-seven thousand dollars.
We'd be paying out pocket, yeah, I mean, all the buildings pretty much have had new roofs on them, I don't know, in the last.
Three to four years, yeah, we put two on last year that I know of.
That was the annex.
Annex, the health department. Extension office.
Yeah.
We did that one too.
Oh, we didn't do that one, like, yeah, we'll be doing that one this.
I just, I guess. Need to know as, as far as if you want to renew what we have and if you wanted to go. If you want to let me know on the deductible buy down, or you think you want to go with that or.
Smaller buildings, we could almost gamble on it. Not the courthouse or.
I mean, even if those, because most of the others, like you said, we'd probably just pay it.
We're just gonna have to eat them.
Right, but those two.
Unless the building's gone.
Well.
I mean, really.
Yeah.
And even at that, one percent. So, anybody wanna make a motion?
I might want to.
I not necessarily want to, but I think you need to.
You need to.
I'll make a motion, we accept the uh, you want me to list them all out or just?
No, Heather's listing them.
Okay, property liability. Uh, policies as presented with a total. Premium of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Yeah, but I think what we said, being able to, to use some of the public safety. Lit will, and that's, a good bit of it is with the new jail. Inside and inventory.
What it's for.
Yeah.
And depending on what you do at the old jail, I mean, you're still looking at options on that. There's only what, three of those in the state? Possibly.
I think there may be more, but those other ones don't have, aren't normally opened, the other counties, so, but.
I mean, that's a higher rate, I mean, it's increased or have. Reflection on your insurance too.
Yeah. I'll second your motion. Any more discussion? Not really. Not really. All over in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Need a couple signatures. That's on the cyber. App that I have to send in, just need a signature there. One, I have them just down at the bottom of the page.
And that one.
Okay. No other questions?
That's what it is.
Well, appreciate you looking out for us.
Plenty of fun.
Yeah. I know you do your thing you can. You know, it's, he, like Mike said the other day, it's. He called this good news, but I don't see it, but, you know.
Beats the alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a contract for the. Jefferson County Jail Walnut Street, thank you, Sarah. Needs assessment evaluation renovations of the building into a remodeled juvenile detention facility. This is a. Needs assessment evaluation. I guess, could say the terms, the county agrees to compensate the contractor at a rate of a hundred dollars an hour. The estimated total hours, estimated total hours, twenty to thirty. At a one thousand retainers do immediately upon signing the contract, which we get with him. So it shouldn't exceed two thousand to three thousand dollars.
But it's, it's a step that's needed to.
Yeah.
If we're gonna go forward with the juvenile, so we need to get that.
Our, our first, our needs assessment actually was done when the uh. Ladies from juvenile detention center came down and looked, it's already a jail, so this is the next step. I'll make a motion, we accept the contract from Joshua Nichols for the comprehensive needs assessment. To evaluate the renovation of the old jail.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have. Consulting services, engaging agreements, Stifle Nicholas and Company Incorporated, that's our Andrew Lanham. Been very beneficial for us to have. This gentleman and his company's expertise in. Tax. Breakdowns.
Yeah. So, I mean, we accept, we, it really just.
Renewing.
Yeah, renew the engagement with the. Stifle and Mr. Lanham for the year twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? If not, all those proof, say aye. And we got departments, who wants to go first? B, Brandon. Well, I forbid it. Yeah. We, we gave Jason the night off since he's been drug around Purdue campus all week.
I don't have much of a top date, I'm doing some training the last couple weeks, um, I don't know. Any questions?
He kind of had a little. Lost the phones the other day, but Starlink and everything kicked in.
Yeah, we plugged Starlink in and it went, went to work, so.
Like you wanted.
Smooth transition and picking up the new.
Yeah, uh, we just had to plug in, other than that. Now the phones were, were down by the, I couldn't do anything about that. So. Nine one was still, still up, but.
Carried our weight.
Yep.
Yep. Good deal, you have a thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Next one is B R, I guess.
And B R.
Yeah.
Your B R I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, don't really have a lot, um. So a couple of things, I don't know, you guys have been busy, we were in road school and all, but a couple of things we gotta figure out, we can talk after the meeting, but the uh. Dates for Grinsfelder, they want to come and talk the cost estimate with us. Uh, on animal shelter, so I guess, he doesn't have it done yet when he emailed me, but he said it should be in a few days, just have something for us to look at. So we need to set up a time for that, um. The infrastructure master plan, the meeting with uh, Structure Point, did you have any, I didn't see changes to the spreadsheet, the stakeholders on. I don't have anything else back from.
Yeah, the one that we talked about, but you.
I don't have anything back from Philpom, so they wanted to get together with the stakeholders on that, either the ninth and tenth or the sixteenth and seventeenth.
April.
Of April, so we want to do two days, uh, talked to Kim already to make sure we can have some space here to, to do that, they want to bring in all the stakeholders and start talking to them and gather information, so. But we don't have a date yet, but I think pencil those to the ninth, tenth, or sixteenth and seventeenth.
The DC cold?
Yeah, brought it back with me. Campground. So the I E D C, they keep throwing around all their stuff there and asking for more information, so now they're saying to use land values. Or to value the land that we would donate, the county would donate for that, uh, they need an appraisal or some sort of a selling document, I don't, do we have anything? I don't know if they'll take comps for some similar.
If they had, if we get a developer to do comps with that.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Would that be an appraisal, I guess we could try, okay.
I can, I can find out, but I didn't know if we had anything, it was from the jail property, we have several years ago nearby, I don't know if there'd be anything that could use there. But uh, I'll follow up with uh, folks at the R D A on that, see what we can, what options we got. And then there'll still be the old timber value thing that I'd sort out too. And then uh, we still got the, we haven't issued the campground R F Q yet, so. Sometimes everybody gets caught up, take a look at it and make any suggestions and we can get that going too, so. Okay. Any questions for me?
Good. Thank you. Kim filling in for Matt? Okay, that was quick. Yeah. We're done, huh?
Jason's.
Yeah, I see Jason sitting here.
Uh, no, not right now.
Oh, okay. From the public? Oh, you're county council, you're not public.
I'm here as a private citizen, I came in here just for. Ask about a couple of things, I'm gonna leave you here popping tons like peas, it sounds like, after hearing some of that insurance stuff. Dwayne May, I live on Audubon. And there's a couple of issues, one of them is a lady that's a friend of mine I go to church with, she's a resident of the county. And we had talked about this before about there are areas in the county, and I know she's not the only one. Where it's just super dark coming off of sixty-two across from the um, um, nursing home out there. And, and I've got some pictures, but it's just super dark and we talked about putting the utility pole out there. But we'd also talked about possibly going with maybe some solar and not actually hooking up to the grid. So I wanted to see what we could do about that, maybe do some follow up on that, and I, I'll show you guys after the meeting, the pictures, some of the pictures I took. Uh, and it is, I went out there last night, it's just black, dark, I mean, just as dark as it could be, and it goes back into that new subdivision. Across from nursing home there in Hanover, so. And then I also wanted to ask, I was gonna come in and see where we're at on the drainage out, over there on Audubon Park. And I was gonna get a couple of residents to come, and somebody said that somebody already beat me to the draw that somebody had brought that up again.
Jason's already talked to the property owner about putting a light. Trench in the field, which would help them also.
Right.
So that seems to be very favorable on both sides and hopefully. He'll get, he'll stay on, I know he'll get something done, so.
I know, I know I talked to.
That's what I know about it, so.
Uh, is it my three minutes up yet? We had talked, we had talked about, there's several bottleneck, uh, when Bobby Phillips was superintendent, he said there's about six, about a half dozen bottleneck areas. Where that drains off, so he wanted to take me and I, I never did get around to that, really, I'd like to see those, I don't know if Jason knows anything about those potential pinch points, those bottleneck points. Cause wherever that's at, if there's one left, it's gonna back up from there, right? So we got issues more than just at the subdivision, we got it cleared down to where it drains, so. I know we had talked about a plan for drainage for the county, I didn't, I just wanted to know how we were coming along on that and. Maybe getting some lights with some solar on it, some security lights for some dark areas, I know back there at the end of Quail, where they're having trouble with the drainage. Is also a very dark, dark area, so. That's all I really wanted to talk about tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public? Heather, Sarah? No, Dave?
So I did sit on. One session yesterday on the developer engagement, mainly from the city point of view, but it sounds like. The pathway that we're taking with the infrastructure master plan, getting that, the planning laid out and then starting this, so it's kind of in the right direction, so I felt, okay. We've, we started in the, talked about the R F P process, I don't think we're, we're doing that regularly, so I think we're okay there. Uh, I've had some discussions on, on, on a personal side about a, with a realtor who is in, uh, who knows some developers, so I may set up some meetings. There, just so we have some local developers to see, okay, what, what would you, what would be some of your criteria? That you need to be met when you would consider coming in and developing an area, mainly housing, what kind of housing and things like that? Cause I know we've done, there've been studies completed on housing, always wondering what kind of housing, you know? I mean, there are several subdivisions that have fairly good dwell lots, planned for pretty good, pretty large houses and unfortunately for them. They're like half full or less, so how do we, where do we get to a point where it's gonna be meaningful to folks, give them an option to, to live? And not just say, oh, it's just too expensive for me, I can't do that, so. I think the cities has some plans, but it may be a little on the other side of things, maybe a little too small, so, anyway, maybe some developers will help give us some insight on what's. What they think is, is uh, kind of the size housing that would be, people would want. Cause I'm sure they, they get, they field questions on people looking for housing and. So, anyway, so that was the one session that I thought was, there were others to go through, but that's a little bit, kind of stuck out.
Got anything? Well, we did go road school this week and I'm, I'm always taken back at the legislation that's out there that's gonna add. To me, it seems like it's always adding taxes to us. We'll see how this new one comes up with our community crossings grant, it's a little. Well, to me, it's a little bit of a downturn, but I'll see how we can navigate through it and.
I think we all can contact Randy Maxwell.
Yeah, please.
Let him know that House Bill fourteen sixty-one is not something we're.
Yeah.
Very excited about, or. I had one tell me that, uh, there are others that feel the county is leaving money on the table by not implementing a wheel tax. I'm like, what? Like, what if we can find other ways to, cause the house, just House Bill fourteen sixty-one would require a, a county. To receive or to be eligible for the community crossings grant to also have a wheel tax. So, while the state has ratcheted up the gas tax over the years, they've taken, taken more of the gas tax and given less to the counties, but they said, okay, we gotta do something, so. So, while the state has ratcheted up the gas tax over the years, they've taken more of the gas tax and given less to the counties, but they said, okay, we gotta do something, so community crossings grant program came into being, but now they're gonna say like, well, if you want that now, you gotta have this wheel tax. That's, that's the Republican way, I'm not gonna implement the tax, you do it.
You take the heat.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, if you could call Randy Max, he's, he's been very responsive, so I, I'm pretty sure he would respond back, but.
They're saying we can't even apply if we don't have this tax.
We're not even eligible.
You're not even considered. Yeah.
And I'm sure someone brought this up, yes, or, I don't know, it was yesterday, at, at road school, that the state would take their fair share of the wheel tax as well, so. Like, oh, how nice. Anyway, Randy Maxwell, I can get you his number if you want. He's easy to find.
He and I had a pretty good conversation at the uh, at the conference we had, uh, and it was about the real estate changes, the real estate taxes that are.
Property taxes.
Property taxes coming down the pipe and what we're gonna do about that, but then he also mentioned about the community crossing, that we may have to go in some skin in the game as far as the wheel tax before we're even considered, not, that's the first I'd heard of that, so.
Hey, my thought is if we have some other funding sources, which may be economic development agreements or um, riverboat funding, you know, if we have other sources, is, shouldn't that be considered rather than having to implement a tax? I mean, no one's told us, I though, I, I think it's out there, but I think it's old data, but still, it's out there that they, someone's estimated what would be the the, the amount of funds, I'm not gonna call it revenue, I'm not gonna call it any, the amount of funds that would come from a wheel tax for Jefferson County. I don't know what that is, I get, but I'm gonna press the certain representative to get that information to me, since he said he would, I think he will, he just. But I did figure out, okay, if we can come up with that amount, why, why would we have to come up with a wheel tax, if we can supply that, those funds a different way to pay, to, to put into funding for roads, why would we have to do the, the other? So, I'm not sure we'll get a, an answer, but I'm gonna keep pushing, but you can call them too. Cause I mean, you know, in, in a county that has a lot of agriculture, that is just gonna, I don't, I don't know if I say cripple, but it could, I mean, it's gonna really hurt farmers. How many trailers are just used during harvest time, but yet, when you tag that, you're gonna have to pay a wheel tax for every wheel that's on that trailer? So.
And they're all used spring and fall.
Right, right, I mean, it's, it's a limited use thing, and, and I don't, I haven't uh trying to think of combines and other things you get behind, do they have a, I don't know if they're tagged or not, they're not, okay, so it would be more the hauling side of things and trailers and things like that, so, but still, um.
Another thing, if it's enacted, does the city license in the city, go to the city and the county go, which, that means.
I, I didn't get that.
We would get a third of what, you know, the county would be.
I know some of the language is in there about the city already having a wheel tax, but I don't, I don't, I don't know what the breakdown would be if it's like every other.
Be my fear.
Right.
It's not, wouldn't help us hardly at all, yeah.
So.
Just another tax. So anyway, that's my, my upsetting part at school, a lot of other things were good, but that one that we sat in on and bite your tongue. That's all I got.
I move, we adjourn.
I second Ted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.